All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 8th, 2025, meeting of the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. Before we begin, I'd like to make a note that the Board of Commissioners met in an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel-related matters. We'll begin the meeting with a roll call. Ask our township manager, Dave Berman, to now please take the role.
Commissioner Gondak.
President.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here. Thank you. And I'll ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our Deputy Chief of Police, Joe Hagan.
My pledge of allegiance is to the eye of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Thank you so much. Now, to kick off tonight's meeting, we'd like to begin with a special surprise proclamation. This will be led by Commissioner Brian Gondak, with Commissioner Connor Quinn joining him. Commissioner Gondak, the floor is yours.
Come on, hang out. Proclamation recognizing Brookline Fire Chief John Viola for his 58 years of fire service, whereas Fire Chief John Viola first answered the call to service when he joined the Brookline Fire Company on September 9th, 1967, at just 19 years old, beginning what would become an extraordinary 58-year-and-counting legacy of volunteer fire service. And whereas, throughout his distinguished career, Chief Viola rose through the ranks with steadfast dedication, serving as Assistant Engineer on October 1, 1970, Engineer of the Ladder Company that same year, Lieutenant in February 1973, Assistant Chief in May 1974, Deputy Chief in February 1982, and ultimately being appointed Chief of the Brookline Fire Company on March 20, 1983. And whereas, during his tenure, Chief Viola operated and oversaw the operation of four ladder trucks and nine engines, demonstrating deep operational knowledge and unwavering commitment to ensuring readiness and safety. And whereas, he oversaw two major firehouse renovation projects, ensuring that Brookline Fire Company's headquarters became a modern, sustainable, and functional facility capable of supporting the next generation of firefighters. And whereas, he proudly led the department during two historic milestones: the 75th anniversary and 100th anniversary of the Brookline Fire Company, preserving its proud traditions while preparing it for the challenges of a modern fire service. And whereas, in May 1991, he heroically rescued a three-month-old child from a house fire on the 1400 block of Kingsley Road, an act of valor for which he was rightfully awarded the Township Medal of Valor. And whereas, Chief Viola holds the distinguished honor of being the longest-tenured Fire Chief in the history of the Brookline Fire Company, totaling 43 years as Chief, a testament to his service, to his leadership, and devotion. And whereas, over the course of 58 years, he has responded to and provided leadership at countless major incidents throughout Haverford Township and Delaware County, continually demonstrating calm, courage, and professionalism in the face of danger. Whereas, Chief Viola has served as a valued mentor to generations of firefighters, teaching the importance of fairness, objectivity, and integrity, lessons that continue to shape the company's leadership today. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Township of Haverford, on behalf of selected officials, staff, and residents, hereby expresses its deepest gratitude and admiration to Fire Chief John Viola for his unmatched commitment, exemplary leadership, and lifelong service to the Brookline Fire Company and the community it serves. Be it further proclaimed that Township extends its heartfelt congratulations to Chief Viola upon his retirement as Chief of the Brookline Fire Company, and wishes him continued health, happiness, and fulfillment in the years ahead. Proclaim this 8th day of December, 2025.
Surprised me on that one. Connor, go to get up. Surprised me on this one, for sure. To all my fellow firefighters in the room, thank you for your support. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve in the fire service of Haverford Township to many people that I've served with when I was started at 18 years old to where I am at now. I'm not going anywhere. I still hope to do some work in the firehouse and help as we move along. But this means a lot to me. My fire service is deep in my heart and runs in my veins through and through. And I know everybody in this room in the back that are firemen feel the same way. So, thank you, all Commissioners. Thank you very much. This truly was a surprise. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. We're going to take a five-minute recess to allow him to take some photos before we begin the next portion of our meeting. We're reconvening now. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two. At this time, we invite our Civil Service Commission Administrator Bernard McCabe to present on behalf of the Civil Service Commission regarding the appointment of our entry-level patrol officers.
Good evening. My name is Bernie McCabe of the Haverford Township Civil Service Commission. I have the honor and privilege to be with you here tonight to recommend candidates for hire for full-time officer, for promotion to Sergeant, and for promotion to Deputy Chief of Police. The first order of business I would like to ask and request is that you would certify the 2025 new hire eligibility list.
I move to accept the list.
Second.
Heard a motion in a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? In hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
I was just going to ask, for the purposes of everybody in the audience, is to explain the list is now something that we accept and is valid for us for... A year? Two years?
Two.
Two years. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? In hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman, please.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. McCabe?
Thank you. Using the Rule of Three, I will now present to you the first three names and ask for your consideration for full-time patrol officer hire: Lorenzo Javeras, St. Lawrence Teddy Cassidy, Umar Afghan.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion regarding the promotion of our patrol officer... Or, I'm sorry. Regarding the appointments of our entry-level patrol officers.
I motion to appoint Lorenzo Javeras as a Haverford Township Entry Level Police Officer effective January 2nd of 2026.
Second.
Heard a motion in a second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Thank you.
The next three names, the Rule of Three, for your consideration: St. Lawrence Teddy Cassidy, Umar Afghan, Jenny Haley.
I'll now entertain a motion.
I would nominate St. Lawrence Teddy Cassidy.
Second.
Heard a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you. The next set of names: Jack Escher. Jack rises to the top of the list as a veteran. Umar Afghan and Jenna Haley.
I'll now entertain a motion.
Motion to appoint Jack Escher as a Haverford Township Entry Level Police Officer effective January 2nd, 2026.
Second.
Heard a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you. The next set of three names: Umar Afghan, Jenna Haley, William McGoldrick.
I'll entertain a motion from my colleagues.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
I move we appoint Umar Afghan as an entry-level parole officer... I'm sorry. Entry-level patrol officer as of 1/1/2026.
Second.
Heard a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you. The next three set of names: Jenna Haley, William McGoldrick, Jack Mick.
I move to appoint Jenna Haley as a Haverford Township Entry Level Police Officer effective January 2nd.
Second.
Second. Heard a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on the board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you. I will now present the final list of three names: William McGoldrick, Jack Mick, Gianna Coyle.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Jack Gianna. All right. Jack. William McGoldrick for Patrol Officer for Haverford Township, appointed January 1, 2026.
Is there a second? Thank you. I've heard a motion in a second. I'll open the floor to my colleagues for any questions or comments. Hey, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart. Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Congratulations.
I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
I'll record a short bio for each of the new officers.
Thank you. That'd be wonderful.
And then we'll move along because the Raising Eagles came tonight.
Yeah. Thank you.
We'll have them come up and introduce them. Okay. The first one is Lorenzo Javeras. He's 29 years old, was born in North Jersey. He was raised in Bucks County, PA, and graduated from Bristol High School. He's also a graduate of Temple University. He served as a police officer in Philadelphia for three years. He currently serves as Captain in US Army Reserves, where he received the following awards: Army Service Ribbon, the Army Reserve Component Achievement Medal, and a National Defense Service Medal. Lorenzo? St. Lawrence Leo Teddy Cassidy was born in Delaware County and graduated from Ridley High School in 2017. He's also a graduate of West Chester University. He has served as an officer in the Mesa, Arizona Police Department since 2022. While in Arizona, he was an assistant wrestling coach at Williams Field High School. St. Lawrence Teddy Cassidy.
Next up is Jack Escher. Jack's 22 years old, was born and raised in Haverford Town. He's a graduate of Monsignor Bonner High School. He joined the Navy Army Reserves and National Guard in 2021. He was deployed overseas in Iraq, Kuwait, Jordan, and Syria in 2024. He received the following awards: National Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Medal, Army Service Ribbon, Overseas Service Ribbon, Armed Forces Reserves Medal with Meritorious Device and Inherent Resolve Campaign Medal with the Campaign Star. He continued to serve in the National Guard. He'll attend Monaco Police Academy starting next month, and he'll serve alongside his dad, John Escher, who's here tonight. Congratulations. Next is Umar Afghan. Umar Afghan is 34 years old, was born in New York. He was a graduate of August Martin High School in Queens. He also graduated from John J. College of Criminal Justice in 2014. He also served as Police Officer in New York State, and most recently with the City of Philadelphia for eight years. He'll be serving alongside his wife, Brittany, who's also here tonight with her newborn at Haverford Township PD. Congratulations.
Good evening. Next up, we have Jenna Haley. Jenna Haley is 33 years old and born and raised in Delaware County. She attended Archbishop Prendergast High School and is a graduate of Rosemont College in 2014. Jenna was an assistant softball coach for Archbishop Carroll for several years. She will attend Montgomery County Police Academy starting next month. And finally, we have William McGoldrick. William McGoldrick is 26 years old. He was raised in Drexel Hill, PA, and graduated from Monsignor Bonner High School in 2018. He's a graduate of the Delaware County Police Academy and formerly served with the City of Chester Police Department.
Thank you. Next up, I'm going to present... I'd like to present to you for promotion to the role of Sergeant using the Rule of Three: the following names: Lawrence Howard, Kimberly Huganair, Christopher Viola.
Thank you so much. I'll now entertain a motion.
Madam President, motion to appoint Officer Kimberly Huganair as a Haverford Township Police Sergeant effective January 2nd, 2026.
And I'll second.
Heard a motion in a second. Motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Congratulations.
Have a short bio on Kim. Officer Kim Huganair was hired by the Haverford Township Police Department in August of 2005. Prior to coming to Haverford Township, Kim worked as a police officer in Darby Borough. Kim has a Bachelor's of Science degree in criminal justice. She has been a field training officer since 2008. She has attended numerous training courses during her career and to prepare her for the supervisor role, which includes recruiting and retaining the next generation in a high-impact supervision school. Kim is named Officer of the Year in 2021. She has received three distinguished unit commendations and two life-saving commendations. Kim is joined here tonight by her children, Liam and Fiona, along with their parents, Tim and Kelly Quinn.
Congratulations and thank you. I'm going to present the next three names for your consideration: Lawrence Howard, Christopher Viola, Michael Traveline.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion from my colleagues.
Motion to promote Officer Lawrence Howard to Haverford Township Police Sergeant effective January 2nd, 2026.
And I'll second.
Heard a motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues at this time? In hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Congratulations.
We're just going to move on?
Yes.
Officer Howard was hired by the Haverford Township Police Department in July of 2000. Prior to coming to Haverford Township, Larry worked as a police officer in Darby Township and as a dispatcher for Delaware County 911. Larry has an Associate's Degree in Fire Science Technology. He's a longtime volunteer to the Oakmont Fire Company and serves as an Assistant Chief. He's been a field training officer since 2011 and currently a member of the SWAT team. Larry has also worked in a Special Operations Unit, where he worked as an accident investigator, supervised crossing guards, and was involved in a great deal of the department's training. Larry is a certified firearms instructor, TASER instructor, less-lethal weapons instructor, and chemical munitions instructor. He's also a certified Sig Sauer and Glock armor. He has taken numerous incident command courses and was very instrumental in the planning of the 2013 US Open held at Marion Golf Club. Larry is named Officer of the Year in 2021 and again in 2023. He has received eight distinguished unit commendations, two commendations of merit, one life-saving commendation, and one commendation for heroism. Larry is married, a father of three, and he recently became a grandfather, as you could all see tonight there.
Congratulations and thank you. Moving on to our final list, this is for promotion to Deputy Chief of Police, and I present the following three names: Thomas J. Long, Craig Scott, Matthew De Sanctus.
I'll now entertain a motion.
Yes, I move to promote Sergeant TJ Long to Deputy Chief of Haverford Township Police Department effective on December 9th.
Heard a motion. Is there a second?
Good.
Heard a motion in a second. Motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Congratulations.
And the bio for Deputy Chief Long. He started with the Haverford Township Police Department in January 2003, and after serving 14 years as forensic investigator for Delaware County Medical Examiner's Office. Deputy Chief Long served in Patrol Division from 2003 until 2009, when he was assigned to the Detectives. While assigned to that division, he was awarded numerous commendations for outstanding work on cases which concluded in arrested convictions such as a serial bank robber known as the Mummy Bandit and a high-profile homicide which took place on Haverford Road. As a detective, Deputy Chief Long worked as a fire investigator, was assigned to Delaware County Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, was a SWAT team member, and later a hostage negotiator. His work in the Detective Division led him to be named Officer of the Year in 2011 for his outstanding work in the unit. Deputy Chief Long was promoted to Sergeant in 2018, where he was assigned to the Patrol Division. In 2021, Deputy Chief Long was transferred to be Supervisor of Special Operations. As Supervisor of Special Operations, his duties included planning major events in the township, conducting investigations of all traffic-related issues, overseeing department-related training, coordinating the Delaware County DUI Task Force. He was also... He was also assigned to the Delaware County Crash Team and Lead Sergeant in the hostage crisis negotiating team. Deputy Chief Long is also a graduate of the FBI Leadership Traeology Course. Deputy Chief Long has a bachelor's and science degree from Newman University, and he has received two Officer of the Year nominations, four merit commendations, and 10 unit commendations. Married to his wife Anne and father of two sons Connor and Aiden. Last but not least, Deputy Chief Hagan is leaving us on January 2nd. We will honor him in the meeting in January. I just want to say a few words while he's standing here that TJ, you've got big shoes to fill. Joe has been a close friend, an outstanding deputy chief, outstanding supervisor, and he's always two steps ahead of what I'm thinking, which works out well because we're mostly always on the same page with the support of the Commissioners, the Civil Service Commission, and I thank you for the detail and the work that has gone into this hiring process. It was a long and arduous process because of the number of people we had to interview. We had to interview 50 people in two days. And then with the sergeants' examinations and the deputy chief examination. But most of all, I just want to recognize Joe for his service in the community and to the police department for his years of service. Commissioner, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Hagan, we look forward to having you back in January. Yes, so we're going to take a five-minute recess, please, to allow folks to take some pictures with their family members. All right, thank you so much. We're reconvening now. And we're going to start by moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Proclamations. We'll begin with a presentation of a proclamation by Commissioner Jerry Hart for our adopted trail partners. Commissioner Hart, the floor is yours.
Whereas the township of Havertford is committed to preserving and enhancing the natural beauty, safety, and accessibility of our parks and trail system, and whereas community stewardesship plays a vital role in maintaining these treasured public spaces, ensuring they remain places of recreation, reflection, and enjoyment for residents and visitors alike. And whereas, for more than a year, our Adopt a Trail volunteers have generously dedicated their time, energy, and care to the ongoing maintenance and improvement of our township trails. And whereas, these volunteers have undertaken essential tasks, including removing litter, planting and tending native species, clearing invasive plants, and serving as vigilant eyes throughout our parks and trails, thereby ensuring that our trail network remains safe, healthy, and welcoming for all. And whereas, their commitment has filled a critical need that the township could not accomplish alone, strengthening the environmental health and community spirit of our public spaces. And whereas, thanks to their hard work and stewardship, the township continues to enjoy some of the most beautiful, well-maintained, and beloved trails in the county. And whereas, the township wishes to honor and express its deep appreciation to the following adopted trail partners for their outstanding service. Nolan Painting for the Pency Trail, Mom's Organic Market for the Caricon Trail, Darby Creek Valley Association for the Darby Creek Trail, Run Strong Southbrook Trail, Allen Rushforth Northbrook Trail, Bill Minji Marion Golf Manor. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the township of Havertford hereby recognizes and extends its heartfelt gratitude to these dedicated Adopt a Trail volunteers for their exemplary service, environmental stewardship, and commitment to our community. Be it further proclaimed that this expression of appreciation be entered into the official record of the township. With sincere thanks for the lasting positive impact these individuals and organizations have made on our parks, trails, and community as a whole, proclaim this 8th day of December 2025, Judy Trombetta, President.
Thank you. We now invite the partners to come up and take a picture with Commissioner Hart. Thank you and congratulations. Thank you. All right. I'm going to let folks file out for a moment. Okay, we'll now continue with our proclamations with remarks from Commissioner Larry Holmes regarding his proclamation honoring Troop 144 scout leaders. Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you, Madam President. On November 13th, I had the great privilege to attend a retirement ceremony involving Troop 144 chartered to St. Dennis in Havertown. President Trombetta was with me along with State Representative Vitale, and we heralded the retirement and the efforts of Scoutmaster Tim A. and Assistant Scoutmaster Jim Dwyer, and Committee Chair Jim Smith, and Treasurer Pat Shea. And I just want to note a couple of things about them. I'm not going to read the whole proclamation, but Tim A., whose son achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, shared his expertise as a long-term faculty member of the Villanova University School of Business, where he taught for nearly four decades. Jim Dwyer, also the father of an Eagle Scout, served for many years as Brand Chief of the United States Nuclear Regulatory Commission, and brought that commitment to his scouting roles as chef, quartermaster, and camping chair. And Jim Smith as committee chair, and Pat Shea as treasurer, provided the behind-the-scenes leadership, sound stewardship, and tireless dedication to fundraising that sustained Troop 144's program, and both also are fathers of Eagle Scouts within Troop 144. So it was my privilege to proclaim their accomplishments and to thank them for their service, and it was a beautiful evening put on by the scouts.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Round of applause. All right, we'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Four, the Citizens Form. This is the portion of our meeting during which we invite our registered speakers to share their remarks. Afterward, we'll open the floor to members of the audience who wish to speak about items on tonight's agenda. Please note that if you wish to speak about a matter not on tonight's agenda, there will be a second Citizens Form later in the meeting for those remarks. Each speaker will have approximately three minutes to share their comments. And with that, I'll invite our first registered speaker to the podium. When you come forward, please state your name and indicate your residency before beginning your remarks. But first, I'm pleased to invite Havertford Township Free Library's new director, Mary Ann Olson, to the podium to introduce herself. We are so pleased to have you joining us tonight.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Olson. I'm the new director at the Havertford Township Free Library. I'm thrilled to join the wonderful staff at the library in our beautiful newly renovated space, and also to get to know the greater Havertown community as both the library director and a new resident myself of Ward 7. So I'm excited to really get to know the town.
Great to hear.
Yes. Thank you to the Commissioners for the time and opportunity to introduce myself and also for your ongoing support for the library. I also have some flyers of programs as well as my contact information that I'll...
Thank you so much. We do not have any other registered speakers, so I'm now going to open it up to the audience for any comments they wish to share on agenda items. So, starting on the left-hand side, not in the first row, not in the next row. Anybody in the last row there? No? Anybody on the right-hand side? No? Okay, well, thank you so much. Thank you again for being here, Ms. Olson. So we'll move on to our budget section of our agenda tonight, beginning with the adoption of our 2026 budget. So first, we'll review any changes to the preliminary budget. I'll open the floor to my colleagues to report on any changes at this time.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
I would ask our township manager to report on any changes of any significance or our assistant township manager at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. The general fund budget, we do have a few, and it was in your agenda packets. They're all indexed. I'll just briefly go over each one. But in general, most of them are due to timing issues. So for instance, in the general fund, the preliminary budget was $57.7 million as introduced. The final will be $57.9. And what that is, is the 2025 trash truck for $245,000 that will not arrive in 2025, so we're moving it to 2026. Okay, so that's the big change there. In the ARPA fund, we introduced an adopted preliminary of $4.2 million. That will go down to $3.8 million. Again, a timing issue, but the reverse timing issue. One of the sweeper, if you recall, a sweeper was one of our large equipment purchases from Public Works. We did not think that was going to arrive until 2026, but it did arrive, and we paid for it in 2025. So that reduced that budget. There is no change in the sewer fund budget, and that will remain as introduced at $5.6 million. And the capital projects budget, we introduced at $14.1 million. The final will be $14.5 million, that swing of $400,000. And we did need to move a few projects. We originally had them in 2027, but they really do need to be moved up due to the need, one of which was a storage tank project of the Public Works yard. We are also going to be re-chassis-ing and upfitting an ambulance that was not in the preliminary budget, but we do have monies already on hand from the 2023 bond issue. So we already have those monies. So most of the changes, as I said, they're timing issues. It does not change the proposed tax rate, which would be $4.545 going up to $4.695. Sewer would remain unchanged at $5.15 per thousand gallons of water used, and the trash fee would go to $2.95 per year for trash and recycling for all our residents. And that's the summary of the changes that we're proposing.
Thank you so much. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the final budget for '26.
Madam President, I move we adopt the final budget for 2026.
I've heard a motion. Is there a second? Thank you. I've heard a motion and a second. Motion's now open for discussion. Any further questions or comments from my colleagues? In the hearing none, Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grub.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Now move on to several ordinances related to the adoption of our budget. We'll begin with ordinance number P-17-2025. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
I move we adopt the second reading of Ordinance P-17 of 2025, authorizing the imposition of an annual fee for the collection of refuse and recyclable materials and establishing penalties for non-payment thereof.
Heard a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I've heard a motion and a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? In hearing none, move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grub.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion for P-18, that's 2025.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
I move we adopt the second reading of Ordinance Number P-18 of 2025, authorizing the imposition of an annual sewer rental or charge to each property connected to the public sewer and establishing penalties for non-payment thereof.
Heard a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. Motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? In hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grub.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. I'll now move on to entertain a motion for ordinance number 3030-2025.
Madam President.
Commissioner Holmes.
Madam President, this ordinance is a first and final reading, first and only reading, for the tax levy. I move we adopt the first and final reading of Ordinance Number 3030 of 2025, establishing the property tax rate for 2026.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. Motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board?
Just note for the record that the tax rate is $4.695 mils.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Any further questions or comments? In hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grub.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion for ordinance number 3031-2025.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
Madam President, I move we adopt the first and final reading of Ordinance Number 3031 of 2025, appropriating funds for the 2026 operation of government.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Heard a motion and a second. Motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grub.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. That concludes the budget portion of our meeting. Thank you. And congratulations.
Madam President, if I may, I just want to once again thank publicly our township manager, our assistant township manager and finance director, all the department heads, and everybody who cooperated with our leadership to put this budget together. I appreciate the great deal of effort and work that went into it, the excellent explanations and analysis that was provided to us and to the public at our last meeting, and just want to say thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Any further comments? Okay, then at this time, I'd like to invite our Chair of the Commissioners' Fire Committee, Commissioner Gondak, to share this month's Bureau of Fire update. Commissioner Gondak, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam President. The Havertford Township Bureau of Fire report for November of 2025, with a total incidents of 66. 57 were township incidents and nine out-of-t township mutual aid incidents. Average personnel per call was 20. 594 personnel hours committed to incidents and 713 personnel hours committed to training. The Havertford Township Bureau of Fire provided mutual aid to two working fires within Delaware County and one working fire in Montgomery County. With regards to our ambulances for November 30th of 2025, there were a total of 426 dispatches resulting in 357 medical charts being created, and that composed 84 out-of-t township coverages comprised. And that is the report.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Gondak. Any questions or comments related to this report? Hearing none, we'll move on to our Township Auditor update. So at this time, I'd like to invite Township Auditor Ross Anderson to share his monthly report. Mr. Anderson, the floor is yours.
First off, congratulations to all the officers. Officer Hagan, you will be missed. Well, he's already gone. John Viola, you are not allowed to...
John Viola, you are not allowed to retire. I was shocked about the whole Brooklyn thing. He's like, "All right, because it's not from me, Forrest." Yeah, but still. I also vote that we should make a slightly process to amend the charter so that we no longer have meetings on Eagles nights.
Speed it up.
Exactly. Okay. All right, so I reviewed the warranted expenditures for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all the questions were answered to my satisfaction. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Anderson? And, no. Then, hearing done, I'd like to invite our Township Manager, Dave Berman, to provide his update for this month. Mr. Berman, the floor is yours.
I have a ton of information to report on this evening. Everybody get settled. Really, leaf season started in the fifth ward today. Next week, they'll be in the seventh and eighth wards. I'm sorry, fifth and sixth ward this week, seventh and eighth next week. Week of Christmas will be the ninth ward. That's ballpark where we are. And I wanted to thank everybody for a great year. We got a lot done. It wasn't always easy, but I thank the board and everyone who works here for all your hard work. And in particular, I have to thank Amy because the budget was awesome, and thank you very much for pulling that together. And Happy New Year to everybody, best wishes for the holiday season, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Any questions or comments related to Mr. Berman's update? And hearing done, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Appointments. I'll begin by entertaining a motion for an appointment to the Library Board of Trustees.
I would like to have a motion to appoint Eric Schnittke to the Library Board of Trustees for a term to end on December 31st, 2027.
Second.
Thank you. I've heard a motion and a second. Are there any other nominees for this position?
Madam President, motion to appoint Nicole Bruno to the Library Board of Trustees for a term to end December 31st, 2027.
Second.
Heard a motion and a second. Are there any other nominees? Is there a motion to close?
Yes, so moved.
The board will now consider the motion to close by a voice vote. All those in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The board will now consider Nicole Bruno and Eric Schnittke for the Library Board of Trustees for the unexpired term ending December 31st, 2027. Mr. Bruno, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Eric Schnittke. Schnittke. I apologize.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Eric Schnittke.
Commissioner Cavender.
Eric Schnittke.
Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. Schnittke.
Commissioner Quinn.
Eric Schnickie.
Commissioner Hart.
Nicole Bruno.
Commissioner McCollum.
Eric Schnittke.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Eric Schnittke.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Eric Schnittke. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Now, move on to consider the appointment of our business tax appeal hearing officer. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
I move we approve a professional services agreement with Kathleen Thomas Esquire to serve as the Township's Act 511 Independent Hero Officer.
Second. Heard a motion, a second. Motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board?
This is a recommendation of our Finance Director and Assistant Township Manager, and I accept her recommendation and recommend Attorney Thomas's approval.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Hearing done, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We now move on to Agenda Item Number 10, the approval of warrants. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Commissioner Holmes.
Madam President, I move we approve warrants. Warrant number 12 of 2025 totaling $6,752,685.68 comprising the general sewer fund payroll for November 20th of 2025 in the amount of $1,254,598.4. The general sewer fund payroll for December 4th, 2025 in the amount of $834,811.10. The general fund disbursements in the amount of $2,255,366.35. Sewer fund disbursements in the amount of $628,797.5. Community development block grant disbursement in the amount of $183,826.60. Capital projects fund disbursements in the amount of $198,610.73. American Rescue Plan fund disbursements in the amount of $503,545.28. And a credit card statement ending November 27th of 2025 in the amount of $14,911.78.
Heard a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Heard a motion, a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues regarding the approval of warrants? And hearing done, Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We now move on to consider the approval of the items listed on the consent agenda. Please note that all items are detailed in the public packet. At this time, I'd like to ask my colleagues if anyone wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda for individual consideration later in the meeting. Hearing no such requests, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve Items A to C of the consent agenda as further detailed in the public packet.
Second. Heard a motion, a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board regarding the items on the consent agenda? And hearing done, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. The board will now move on to five ordinances this evening, beginning with the second reading of P-14-2025. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-14 of 2025 authorizing a renewal lease agreement with Chef &amp; Sons LLC DBA Havaburger, Essington, PA, for a portion of certain property located at 1018 Derby Road, Escadium. The Haverford Township, PA, subject to review by the Township Solicitor and further subject to approval by the Township Manager of the final document.
Thank you. I've heard a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Heard a motion, a second. The motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? And hearing done, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Board will now consider P-15-2025 a traffic ordinance. Go ahead, please. Yes.
Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-15-2025, further amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, adopted June 30th, 1986, and known as General Laws of the Township of Haverford, Chapter 175, Vehicles and Traffic, installing a stop sign on Dill Road in both directions at the intersection of Concord Avenue.
Second.
Heard a motion, a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing done, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Board will now consider P-16-2025. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner McCollum.
Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-16-2025, further amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, adopted June 30th, 1986, and known as General Laws of the Township of Haverford, Chapter 175, Vehicles and Traffic, installing a stop sign on Vincent Road eastbound at the intersection of Bryan Street.
Second.
Heard a motion, a second. The motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? And hearing done, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Board will now consider P-19-2025, first reading of a traffic ordinance. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
Madam President, I move we adopt the first reading of P-19 of 2025, further amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, adopted June 30th, 1986, and known as the General Laws of the Township of Haverford, Chapter 175, Vehicles and Traffic, installing a special purpose parking zone in front of 2922 Berkeley Road.
Heard a motion. Is there a second?
Yep.
Heard a motion, a second. The motion's now open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues at this time? And hearing done, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Board will now consider P-20-2025, first reading of another traffic ordinance. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P-20-2025, further amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, adopted June 30th, 1986, and known as the General Laws of the Township of Haverford, Chapter 175, Vehicles and Traffic, installing a special purpose parking zone in front of 2401 Clover Lane.
Is there a second?
Second.
Heard a motion, a second. The motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? And hearing done, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondak.
Yes.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCollum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion for Resolution 2468-2025. I'll now entertain a motion. This evening, the board will consider five resolutions, starting with Resolution Number[1334.61]
authorizing the twenty twenty six comprehensive fee schedule.
Part of motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Part of motion is second. Motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. I will now entertain a motion for resolution twenty four sixty nine dash twenty twenty five.
Madam President, motion to adopt resolution number twenty four sixty nine dash twenty twenty five, approving the minor subdivision and land development plan for Cadence Development Partners for a two lot subdivision and land development, including constructing stormwater management at thirty eight Fulmer Avenue.
I've heard a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Heard a motion is second. Motion's now open for discussion. I'd like to ask our township manager to walk us through the waivers that have been requested at this time.
So just background, you reviewed this at your work session last week. It's a minor subdivision which the applicant is proposed to subdivide the existing quarter acre lot into two lots. The existing dwelling is proposed to remain on lot one and a new single family dwelling and driveway are proposed to be constructed on lot two. There's a subservice infiltration facility proposed for stormwater management. They are requesting two waivers from section one sixty, attachment one, driveways, to not provide a minimum driveway width of ten feet and to provide at least two feet from driveway to the property line. And the second waiver is from section one sixty five B, four A and C, to not install curbs and sidewalks along Lanark Avenue. A partial waiver may be granted, subject to the applicant's agreement, which we have, to pay a fee in lieu of installation of required sidewalks and curbs. The applicant is going to pay a fee in lieu in the amount of fifteen thousand one hundred thirteen dollars for sidewalks and curbing along Lanark Avenue for the land development only, and the township will utilize these funds toward neighborhood pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements elsewhere. And that's the explanation.
Thank you so much, Township Manager Berman. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board?
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
Madam President, I object vehemently to the fee in lieu of in lieu of providing the curbs and sidewalks. I think the number is is high. I think the first and foremost, the planning commission, which knows our policy for requiring sidewalks and curbs, but is still the first entity in this township that looks at and considers requests from homeowners or developers, had recommend that this be waived and not with a fee. This fee represents, if the information given to me is good, and I believe it is, this fee represents the actual cost of putting in these curbs and these sidewalks in this area. One of the issues for this sidewalk is that this sidewalk would have to be constructed differently than most sidewalks because it would cut into a hill. So it wouldn't be as simple as laying down concrete blocks for a sidewalk, but actually have to be shored up to make up for the difference in the elevation of the property from left to right as you are walking on the sidewalk. Furthermore, because it's on a corner, it's going to require a cut curb for purposes of ADA compliance. As far as I know, we have not charged anyone a waiver of this that amounts to the amount of the total cost of this sidewalk. And I think the particular nature of this property and its location, which is literally across the street from the Pennsy Trail, makes this, I would say, an exercise of our discretion that I do not agree with. We have the ability under the law to evaluate all of the circumstances around a request like this. I understand that the owner has agreed to this, and that is certainly the owner's right, but it's my duty to point out things that I think are should not be done by the township when the situation calls for it, and I think this is one of those. I would consider a significant reduction to the fee. But if we actually have a fee that represents the actual cost, the question would have to be asked, what is it we're trying to accomplish? Because these people then would be paying the amount of money rather than improving their property, therefore increasing their basis in their property and perhaps having a deductible expense associated with this, would instead be paying what amounts to a penalty or a fine by this township for the money to just be put elsewhere into sidewalks. I don't think that satisfies our intent of this ordinance. And for those reasons, I'm sure others, but there's an ego scheme, I object to this part of the resolution. And I ask my colleagues to think about it and consider reducing or eliminating this fee in lieu of this, in lieu of requiring these sidewalks. Or be consistent and just deny the waiver and let this money be used for its original purpose, which is build a sidewalk and fix the curb. So that is my position on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Is there a motion on the table for that, Mr. Holmes?
Well, I would ask a person who, I would ask Commissioner Hart, I'm sorry, not the person, my colleague, Commissioner Hart, would you amend the resolution to eliminate the fee in lieu as part of the waiver?
No.
Thank you.
There that is. Then I would recommend to my colleagues that they vote against this resolution as drafted.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Further questions or comments from my colleagues?
I do have a comment. This property is in Ward Two, and I've walked along this section of Lanark Road. It is indeed across from the Pennsy Trail, but there are only a couple access points to the Pennsy Trail that are safe. The streets along that dead end into Lanark, like Fulmer, Mercer, Rodman, they don't have clear access to the trail. And one of the goals for our comprehensive plan was to increase pedestrian safety, walkability, bikability throughout the township, so people could get out of their cars and meet their neighbors and walk through their community. So I understand what you, Commissioner Holmes, have been, have eloquently said about the payment of this fee in lieu of, but I think that that this payment will help the township achieve in other areas of the township pedestrian safety, which is really vital to us to meet our comprehensive goals. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstie Grupp. Further questions or comments?
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
Madam President, I think it falls on the entire township and all the taxpayers of this township to pay for our improvements and the things that make the public safer in this township. I think particularly picking out this property, which by its layout, has a much more expensive project ahead of it, and we are using that specific price for that project to set the fine in this example, I think is not fair. And honestly, I think is an abdication of our duty to think about the entire township, including those individuals who are now bearing one hundred percent of the brunt of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Further questions or comments?
I'd just comment that we use, in other areas, for in subdevelopment of these properties, if someone can't replace the shade trees, we take a fee in lieu so that we can use that money to add trees to the canopy in the township. If they can't provide the recreational space on the property, we take a fee in lieu so that we can use that for a recreational space other places in the community. And so I think we're doing exactly the same thing here. This is certainly a place where a sidewalk could be put in. I have the argument of why it isn't, you know, reason not to put it there. So I think we should take the fee, which provides for other areas in the township to provide for pedestrian and bike safety. I think the fee is calculated. The planning department has tried to come up with a fee that fits with what the cost of the sidewalk would be. And, you know, I think it's a reasonable fee. It's a fee that the developer has agreed to, and it's money that will help improve pedestrian safety in the township, can be used to help pedestrian safety elsewhere in the township, as again, we're trying to do with our comprehensive plan, as was mentioned. So I would vote in favor of this.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
Just two months ago, we approved a plan like this and a fee in lieu at St. John Newman, and that waiver was for all curbs and no fee was charged for that. And it was for a large path of sidewalk that did not have to be done, and the fee was only half the cost of that. And that sidewalk would have cost less per square foot than this sidewalk would cost. Another reason why I'm against this, because I don't think we've been consistent. And I think the first time we're deciding to take a hundred percent of the fee against somebody is in circumstances that I don't think are fair.
Thank you.
Question. That project Larry, you're talking about, Commissioner Holmes, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was an interior sidewalk that was not exposed to the street, correct? It was on the interior of the property?
Well, I mean, interior and that, there was a foot or two between the road and it. But it was for the public to walk on. Yeah. St. John Newman?
Yeah, I thought it was entirely on private property. Like, it wasn't out near the street. It was on the other side of trees, like an internal. No? Okay.
No, that was the section that they did not have to build a sidewalk on. Like, the first half we allowed, and then the second half we gave them a waiver on. Any further comments or questions? In hearing none, we'll move to a vote on this resolution approving all waivers as described with a payment.
Could I ask a question?
Please.
Sorry.
No. Commissioner Forstie Grupp, yes.
Could someone kindly go over the process for arriving at this sum? I'm sure it wasn't pulled out of the air. So could that be sort of reviewed for us?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Chuck Faulkner to do that for us. There was a review and a process that was conducted. So once the planning commission goes through, reviews the project and everything, makes their recommendations, they will comment on the waivers, of course, which is one of the, one of the things he's asking for, is a waiver for the curb and sidewalk. The developer is asked for a reasonable cost to do the improvements, to complete the curb, in this case, the curb and sidewalk, okay? In this particular case, it's not curb and sidewalk off of Darby Road, where there's defined width of the street, where there's no impediments or anything like that, and where there's a relatively flat slope. As Mr. Holmes had indicated, there is some grading required to put this sidewalk in down below in the back of the property there. There is, it's at a corner, so by law, you need an ADA ramp there to go across the street. And there also is some impediments there, being a storm sewer inlet. And lastly, there is minimal right of way there also. So they would have to bump out a few feet into the curb to get the standard four foot wide sidewalk. So all those things were taken into consideration when the developer gave us his cost to do that work.
And just for clarification purposes, by taken into consideration, you mean were calculated into the estimated cost?
Were all calculated into the final cost for that, yes.
Further questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Anything further from my colleagues? And again, we'll move to a vote on this resolution approving all waivers as discussed and with a payment in lieu of for the sidewalks. Mr. Berman, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
No.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion for resolution number twenty four seventy dash twenty twenty five.
Motion to adopt resolution number twenty four seventy twenty twenty five, approving the twenty twenty six meeting schedule for the Board of Commissioners and Volunteer Boards and Commissions.
Second.
I've heard a motion is second. Motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes. Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey. Yes. Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. I'll now entertain a motion for resolution twenty four seventy one dash twenty twenty five.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty four seventy one dash twenty twenty five, authorizing the President and Board of Commissioners to execute an employment agreement with David R. Berman as Township Manager-Secretary, commencing January sixth, twenty twenty six, and ending on January third, twenty twenty eight.
Second.
Heard a motion is second. Motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board?
I would just comment, keep up the good work, Mr. Berman.
Thank you. Yep, David, it's great to have you back.
Any further questions or comments? In hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Berman. I'll now entertain a motion for resolution twenty four sixty seven dash twenty twenty five.
Madam President, motion to adopt resolution number twenty four seventy two twenty twenty five, authorizing and requesting PennDOT approval to close Caracun Drive for recreational activities on specific dates during twenty twenty six.
Is there a second? My apologies for the speaking earlier, but we've heard a motion is second. Motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. That exhausts our resolutions on tonight's agenda. We now move on to agenda item number fourteen, the approval of a one year extension of our chief of police contract. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, I move to reappoint John F. Oraviola as the chief of police and to authorize the president of the board to execute an employment agreement with John Oraviola commencing on February seventeen, twenty 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 six and ending on January sixth, twenty 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 seven.
Second.
Heard a motion is second. The motion's open for discussion. Are any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board?
Chief, we're thrilled to have you back here.
I second that.
All right. So, hearing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
An enthusiastic yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Congratulations, Chief. Now move on to agenda item number fifteen, the recertification of our twenty twenty six MMO. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
Madam President, I move we recertify the twenty twenty six minimum municipal obligation for non-uniform defined benefit and non-uniform defined contribution pension plans as a result of collective bargaining terms that are effective January first, twenty twenty six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Heard a motion is second. Motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues at this time? In hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Holmes. Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. We now, motion carries. We now move on to agenda item number sixteen, to consider two contract awards this evening. I'll entertain the first contract award, first motion for the Darby Creek Trail Southern Extension Contract Award.
Madam President, motion to award a contract to Scott Building Corporation, the lowest responsible bidder, in the amount of four hundred and nineteen thousand ninety one dollars and twenty five cents for the Phase Three of the Darby Creek Southern Trail Extension Project.
Heard a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Mr. Berman.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion regarding the Vermont and Glendale Intersection Improvement Contract Award.
Madam President.
Yes, Commissioner McCullum.
Motion to award a contract to Scott Building Corporation, the lowest responsible bidder, in the amount of five hundred forty six thousand three hundred seventy nine dollars and twenty five cents for the Vermont and Glendale Intersection Improvements Project, subject to approval by PennDOT.
Second.
Heard a motion is second. Motion's open for discussion. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this board? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, take the roll.
Commissioner Gondek.
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grupp.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullum.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes. Motion carries. We will now move on to agenda item number seventeen, the continuation of our citizens forum, providing an opportunity for any member of the public who wishes to address the board. With that said, I'll just open the floor. Yes, Ms. Alver.
Michelle Alvere, excuse me, Hastings Avenue. I have two comments tonight on the leaf collection. One is that I would like the township to reconsider the method in which they're doing the leaf collection, specifically in, on our street, a street that is twins, that everyone has to park in the street because we cannot fit in our driveways. The new method in the last two years is to use a leaf blower, and public works guys walk down the sidewalk and they blow the leaves and the debris through the cars that are parked on the street. I had over a two hundred dollar repair this year on my car because I had leaf debris and sticks stuck in my brakes because they try to blow it through and under the cars. And, you know, I get that it's my issue to get the car off the street, but we don't know exactly when these leaves are being picked up, so it's very hard to know to not have your cars on the street. Previously, in the twenty-two previous years that I lived in the township, they rake the leaves into the driveway apron area and they use a leaf vacuum to pick them up and don't have to go through the cars that are all parked in the parking spots. That's the first comment. And the second comment is, and I say this every year, can't we please reconsider the order of the wards for the leaf pickup? Wards one, two, and three are always the first week, and the trees never have dropped their leaves for wards one, two, and three. By the time it's around for our second week, it's always the Monday after Thanksgiving. And for those people who travel for family reasons, they don't have time to get their leaves out to the curb. So those leaves end up in the trash, which end up being more bulk trash that has to be paid for as a disposal item in the township. So if we could figure out a way to more equitably rotate through the wards, it would be really appreciated. Anyway, that's my two comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the left-hand side wishing to comment? Anybody on the right-hand side? Okay. Does anybody on the board wish to respond to public comments made this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Any matters that my colleagues would like to bring forward for discussion at this time under new business? In hearing none, we'll move on to the other business portion of our meeting, during which commissioners may make their final remarks. We'll start with First Ward Commissioner Brian Gondak.
Thank you. Keep it brief. I just want to extend congratulations again to Chief Viola on his retirement as the chief of the Brookline Fire Company. I'd also like to congratulate Deputy Chief Hagan on his upcoming retirement from the Haverford Township Police Department. And congratulations to all of the officers who were hired today and who were promoted. I look forward to seeing them in the years to come. That being said, I just want to wish, we're in December, it's holidays for a lot of different religions, so I'd just like to wish happy holidays and happy new year to everyone and just be safe in your travels for the holidays, and I'll see everyone in January.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Gondak. Next up, Second Ward Commissioner Sherry Forstie Grupp.
I would just, again, like to thank you, Chief Viola, for all your years of service for the Brookline Fire Company. And I look forward to working with you again for another year as our police chief. I'd like to offer my congratulations to Joe Hagan for his years of service, and I look forward to working with our new deputy chief, T.J. Long, who has been a fabulous asset to the township. Also, congratulations to all the newly promoted sergeants and all of our newly inducted officers. We're a strong police force, and I thank you for your leadership. And just as Brian Gondak said, happy holidays to everyone. And if you need somewhere wonderful to go, the library has a wonderful fireplace on the first floor and lots of comfortable chairs. And if you want to have something a little more active, there are lots of programs at the library open to everyone, so check out that library site and see what's available to you in our beautiful expanded and renovated library. And congratulations, Mary Ann Olson, for joining us as our library director. We hope you're with us for many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Forstie Grupp. I'll now turn it over to Fifth Ward Commissioner Laura Cavender.
Thank you. I'd like to reiterate, congratulations to Chief Viola and congratulations to Joe Hagan on his retirement. And I'm very much looking forward to working with our new deputy chief, T.J. Long. Welcome to Mary Ann Olson as our new director. Over the past nine months, the Polo Field Steering Committee, which is composed of resident volunteers, has worked closely with Parks and Rec to develop recommendations for community improvements to Polo. These priorities include benches, tables, new landscaping, play area updates and signage, along with a concept for a small pavilion recommended by the Parks and Rec Committee. The goal of these improvements is to ensure Polo Field community spaces serve all users of all ages as a welcoming and accessible space. Community members are welcome on Wednesday, December tenth, from six to seven thirty at the Haverford Township Free Library to learn more about these preliminary priorities based on resident and community input. to learn more about these preliminary priorities based on resident and community input. We're looking forward to gathering at the new library. Parks and Rec staff, members of the Polo Field Steering Committee, who've put in their time, and a representative from our Parks and Recreation Committee, Michelle Alvera, will also be in attendance. So please, Fifth Ward residents and anyone, please bring your questions and ideas. I also wanted to say, in line with my vote tonight, I want to express my full support for this budget and my deep appreciation for our expert township staff and the work they put into it. This year-round work and the diligence that they brought to this budget, as well as my commissioner colleagues on the Finance Committee, has ensured that in this difficult year, we are still able to deliver the services our residents rely on without unduly raising taxes. So your professionalism is appreciated, and it benefits our community. I also want to note something I hope we will continue to prioritize in future budgets, and that is strategic investments in resident-facing services, especially where we can leverage technology or improve our communication and engagement, both to and from the township. For me, this includes making it easier for residents to access township services and information, upgrading our technology where possible, improving our website and digital tools, and strengthening the ways we communicate through social media and newsletters delivered straight to residents' inboxes as well as mailboxes. Modern, efficient communication doesn't just help residents, it makes our staff jobs easier and allows them to focus on delivering what people really need and expect. I hear often from residents who value clear, timely, and accessible information. I think that all of us up here do. As we look ahead, I think there is no better time to leverage our resources in ways that better inform, engage, and invite input from the community. We have an amazing township, and I believe we can do even more to share that story, both with our residents and with the world outside Haverford Township. And I wish everybody a happy holiday season, and I will look forward to 2026. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Cavender. We'll move on to Sixth Ward Commissioner Larry Holmes.
Thank you, Madam President. I will, I'm still writing my speech for everybody in January on the PD, so I'll save it till then. I will just say Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah and Happy Kwanzaa and best wishes to anybody who recognizes any religious or cultural significance to this season. It also, season ends with a new year, and in that new year, I wish all my colleagues and all my constituents and friends and family a very happy and healthy one. And the Eagles are down 7-3 at the end of the first quarter, so I am finished. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Holmes. I'll move on to Seventh Ward Commissioner Connor Quinn.
So thank you and congrats to Mary Ann. I'm thrilled to have you in the best ward in the town. I'm thrilled that you live there. I'm thrilled. So that's great. Chief, I think that's the first time I've ever seen you as surprised tonight with that fire company. And I'm thrilled that for 43, three years you've served as the Chief there, which is longer than I've been alive for. So I can't speak for or for anybody else on this board, but you've done a great, great job, and that is a great, a great, a great, great place. And you can see everybody that was here tonight was here for you. And the police, the police department, 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 department. I've served on the Police Committee as the Chair for the past four, four, four years, and I've been thrilled to work with you, you, you and Joe. And the police force just improved by a lot, by a lot, a lot tonight. And that's also because of the people that serve on our service board, and it's an important job that they all do. And they do a lot for, for, for our, for our community. So I just want to thank Bernie, Mark, and Monet for all the hard work that they put in on that board. And the leaves will be collected in the Seventh and Eighth Ward next, next week, and December 21 is when Santa, when Brookline will have Santa come around. So I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and let's go with the Go Birds.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. We'll move on to Eighth Ward Commissioner Jerry Hart.
Yes, I just want to echo my colleagues' thanks to Chief Ayala for service to the Fire Department. Unfortunately, I got to see work up close and personal at one time and look forward to another year with the Police Department. We'll talk more about Joe Hagan next month. He's been a tremendous asset to the department. Want to thank township staff, Dave and Amy, for the tremendous work on the budget. Looking forward to having Dave here for another year or two. And just another note on Brookline Park. Unfortunately, winter has come a little early, which has prevented us from doing some of the work. If things warm up, we may be able to complete a few more projects, but certainly in the spring, we'll see a lot more done at that point. And wish everyone a Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. We'll move on to Ninth Ward Commissioner Mike McCollum.
Yes, just two quick notes. As Commissioner Quinn brought up, the leaves in the Ninth Ward will be picked up the week of December 22. And on December 21, Bon Air Fire Company will make in the rounds with Santa Claus between 1:00 and 4:00 p.m. I think that that's the time there. That's all I have. Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you, Commissioner McCollum. We'll move on to Vice President and Third Ward Commissioner Kevin McCluskey.
As Commissioner Quinn said, the Oakmont Fire Company is also driving around with a friend on Sunday afternoon around the areas that they service. So if you're in the area and you hear fire trucks, everyone should go out. And I did just want to say it's the end of the year, and, you know, everybody on this board, I think we've had a very, very good year. And at one point or another, I disagreed with everybody on this board about something. But I can say about all of my colleagues up here that I, their decisions that they make and the actions that they take, I think are always come from a place where they're trying to do what's best in their minds for the township. And that sounds like a simple thing, but I don't know how simple it is. And I think that's what has made this board as successful as it has been. And along those lines, this is the last meeting of 2026, so I just would like to acknowledge our President, Commissioner Trombetta, for her leadership this year and, you know, leading us through the meetings and serving as a guidepost for all of us. And so our thanks on behalf of the entire board for Commissioner Trombetta. And that's all I have.
Thank you. That's very kind. So I typically end the year with a more comprehensive reflection, but I also recognize that I'm now the only thing standing between us and watching the Eagles beat the Chargers. So I'll keep it really brief. I'll begin, though, by echoing my colleagues and extending our heartfelt congratulations to Deputy Chief Hagan on his future retirement. It's not lost on me how fortunate I've been to work with him promoting the safety and well-being of our community.